Good evening. I'm Rebecca Wyatt, the councilwoman for the first district. And this is the Art, Culture and History Committee meeting for a beautiful spring day, April 8th, 2019. And we are at 6 o'clock, our starting time. The mission of the Art, Culture and History Committee is to promote, preserve, and rediscover Gary's unique history, culture, art, and architecture, and natural environment. So to that end, we will begin our business. First on the agenda is the review of the minutes from March 4th. Did everyone get an opportunity to take a look at those?
Yes.
Yes.
And, um, I'm good. Let's go ahead and have somebody propose the approval of the minutes.
I so moved.
Seconded, and all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. So the minutes of March 4th, 2019 are approved and admitted into the record of our committee. I normally start this meeting by going around and having introductions. However, I failed to do that. So we will do the introductions now if we can. Would you like to start?
Yes. Good evening, Chairman Wyatt, and to this great committee, our special guest, Mr. Nowacki, who's with us, and to the citizens of Gary. I am Juniper Hall, the chairman and CEO of the Katie Hall Educational Foundation of Gary, Indiana, and I also serve as a commissioner on the Gary Historic Preservation Commission.
My name is Patricia Brown, and I'm serving also on the Gary Preservation Commission. And I serve also with, as a member and executive of the Gary Historical and Cultural Society. And it's a pleasure serving here with Attorney Wyatt for the Arts, Culture, and History, Arts, History and Cultural Committee.
Thank you.
My name is Desiree Simpson. I'm Executive Director of Live Art Studio, Community-Based Art Program here in Gary. And I'm always happy to serve and to participate in this committee.
Thank you. Thank you very much for being here. And to the public, we invite everyone to participate in this committee. We often have presenters here from the arts community in Gary, and it's usually a very lively meeting. So having said that, we will move back to the agenda. And the first item is an update on the Gary Pictorial History. That's the third edition of the book that we got published. And Dr. Cohen usually speaks on that. And so I will, I will speak on his behalf. First of all, he was able to do a book signing and a presentation at IUN when they were celebrating the bicentennial of Indiana University. They had a luncheon celebrating diversity at IUN. And he and Dr. Lane were able to sign some of the books and sell them there. Those books are still available in the city's finance department for $25. And then the actual book is in the council office. So you would just pay your $25 at the finance department, and then take your receipt to the council office, and you can get one. They're very, very well done, and I highly recommend that. The next item on our agenda is Gary Historic Preservation Commission report from Patricia Brown.
Okay. We'll get started speaking about our Gary Land Company building. Yes, we have gotten to a point now where we're not only finished presenting it to the general public, but it will go before the council. And our chair here, Attorney Wyatt, will present it to the Gary council at their next meeting. And, um, hmm, it being the first designated historic, local historic preservation site that we are trying to get through the council so we can let the rest of the information, all the other sites, become available to the general public. Right now, we wanted to have that as the first site being approved by the council.
I think that's especially appropriate because it was, because our former member, Naomi Melander, had such a heart for the Gary Land Company. And so I think it's fitting that we use that as the first facility that will be designated as a Gary landmark. Thank you. Did you have anything else, then, Ms. Brown?
Well, we also have another, an update dealing with St. John's Hospital.
Oh, good.
St. John's Hospital, located on 22nd and Massachusetts. We did communicate via email through the commissioners discussing, trying to protect. When I found out that the demolition group had it on their agenda to take it down, we moved as swiftly as possible trying to get the protection law in order. And we did communicate, and the law is called interim protection under Section 111-50 of the ordinance. And this means that the commission would be able to have special meeting abiding by the open door law to recommend the single-site historic district of the city council for designation. And the property would be essentially under interim protection between the commissioners' vote and when the city council moved to approve or reject this at their next meeting. And what made us aware of it was that I went into the location, looking at the building, and I noticed some debris at the back of it. And so I called about it, and they told me, oh, it's scheduled to be demolished, you know, this year. And I said, hold it, wait a minute. We're trying to save that history for Gary's people. I said, we've had people born there from Gary, people to die there, and people being inpatients there. And it was the only black hos- it was the only hospital designated for African-Americans at that time. Back in 1929, your two hospitals that were here, which was Methodist and Mercy Hospital, they didn't allow people of color to come in and be patients. So St. John's Hospital was erected in 1929 by Wilson, by William Wilson Cook, an architect, a powerful individual. And we had his information shared with us also. After that, the hospital was erected. Not only were they able to train physicians, they trained nurses. And I come to find out, some of our general public, we also have the Judy Leek Mead family. Her mother was a midwife with that designated hospital. I said, oh my gosh, so it's so much history. Judy Leek Mead, she's with the Rooseveltians, with their alumni right now. But her sister Barbara Leek, um...
Wesen.
Wesen, thank you. Barbara Leek Wesen served on, was it the council?
City clerk.
City clerk. So we've got a lot of history here. We don't want destroyed. We want to save whatever we can. And being that the Preservation Commission only came on board about two and a half years ago, we're slowly learning our responsibilities, and we are definitely working as fast as we can to try and help preserve Gary's history.
And Ms. Brown, when did that, did the St. John interim protection, did that already go before the Preservation Commission yet? Has it gone?
No. Well, it has, I'm trying to remember because we have done some, no, it will be coming before the...
Wednesday?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. And so then it will go to the city council after that?
Right.
Okay. Very good.
Right. The council. Thank you.
Well, thank you for being alert to that.
No, kind of. Such as other buildings, there's also other sites we didn't know about, such as the, as a brief update, is the Illinois, I remember what they called it, Illinois Company. And it was a huge building located on the opposite side of the casino, the Majestic Star Casino. There's a huge building over there. And my husband saw it. My husband does Ubering. And he said, there's a building over there. I think you should go and check it out. I said, what do you mean? He said, I think it's a historic site. I said, okay. And I did go and check it out. And it's the Illinois, I can't remember the whole name, it's not in front of me. But there, a structure is there, and it's a beautiful structure. And we are definitely gonna try and preserve that structure as well as other structures we're not aware of in Gary. So the general public know of structures that are kind of hidden, and we don't really, nobody's really bringing it forward. We need your help as far as bringing this information to us, and we will gladly appreciate your service submitting different information and heads up to us. Thank you.
Patricia, could you just briefly explain what the process is in making a request that a property be designated a historic landmark?
As far as your own property, or whether it's a site dealing with other families, you know, you know that such as the Andrew Means Corporation and Means Manor, you know, that's a, that's a huge entity there. And even though they have been declared, some of them have been declared already historical site on a, on a state or federal basis, but locally, it has not been. So we're trying to make local history come of rest. And even though you might see it in the interim report, which was a book published some time ago, you'll go through that book, there's a lot of buildings, it's mostly buildings that they're speaking about. They're not talking about individuals. And we are trying to capture the individuals as well as the sites.
And we do have an application that you can secure. It's called a single-site application. And our committee has them. If you would like to stop by on Wednesday, we will meet at 3:00 PM. We should have some available for the public if you would like to secure.
Sure. Yes.
We should probably make those available through the council office or something.
Okay. We can add the council office.
So that, you know, if somebody can't make a meeting, then they would always have access to it. Yes. I know, they do have, and I think it's the redevelopment department, they can pick one up there.
Okay.
Accessibility there. But council, that would be good also.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Everybody knows with the city council office.
The city council. Right here in City Hall. Right. Okay. Good. That's excellent. Anything else, Ms. Brown?
Not at this time.
Okay. Thank you. You are coming up later on the agenda as well, you see. All right. So the next thing we have is the Katie Hall Education Foundation update.
Well, Madam Chair, and to the committee, and to the general public, and our special guests, the Katie Hall Educational Foundation was very pleased to host its seventh annual Public Service Awards Luncheon on this past Saturday, April 6th, 2019. And the event was held at the Genesis Convention Center right in downtown Gary. The VIP reception began at 11:00 AM. And at 12:00 PM, we started the luncheon, and we were very pleased, first of all, to dedicate the historical marker entitled Representative Katie Hall and Passage of the Dr. MLK Junior National Holiday Law. And this dedication was performed by Casey Piper, who is the director of the Indiana Historical Bureau. And Casey did a fantastic job. This historical marker is the only one in the city of Gary, state of Indiana, and the nation in honor of U.S. Representative Katie Hall, who lived in Gary for more than 50 years. And also in honor of the Dr. King National Holiday Law. There are so many monuments, bridges, streets, and other places named in honor of Dr. King as an individual, but nothing in honor of the National Holiday Law. And we were very pleased to have this dedication on Saturday. And also, the foundation recognized three outstanding individuals. The top award, the Katie Hall Public Service Award, was presented to editor and publisher, Dorothy R. Lavelle. Mrs. Lavelle has been in this community, the city of Gary, as the editor and publisher for more than 50 years. She does own the largest African-American newspaper in Northwest Indiana, as well as the largest African-American newspaper in the city of Chicago. Her circulation has surpassed the Chicago Defender, which was at the forefront of the civil rights movement. But Mrs. Lavelle is at the forefront even more in the happenings in Chicago and across this great nation. Also, we recognized and honored Mr. Steve Sanders, who is an anchor for WGN Channel 9 News. You can see Mr. Sanders daily, Monday through Friday, from 11:00 to 1:00 PM. And he is one of the lead anchors on that station. And we were thrilled to have him because Mr. Sanders has done so much to portray African-Americans in a positive light, and all people. He is a very positive, in my opinion, reporter. He was reared in Alabama during the heart of the civil rights era. So he was very objective to what he saw, what he heard, and it even manifested itself today. So we were very pleased to have him. And then, the last individual is no stranger to this city before her death last year. And as I said in the introduction at the luncheon, you would see her at the council meetings, you would see her at this committee, for the meetings at the Gary Historic Reservation, all types of issues she was concerned with, as long as it had some type of influence on the great city of Gary, Indiana. We all know, I'm speaking of Ms. Naomi Melander, who is deeply missed by myself personally because she has been a great friend for many, many years, as well as her entire family. So these are the people that we did award, and we had other guests. Our very own council lady was present, and Ms. Pat Brown, and also Mr. Jim Nowacki over there was present. And we do thank you, and we appreciate it. And finally, Madam Chair, we unveiled the historical marker after the luncheon was over at 1927 Madison Street. And it is a permanent monument. Come on by 24 hours a day, seven days a week. You don't have to have special permission. Come on out and enjoy the historical marker that was unveiled. And we are pleased to remember the work of Representative Hall in authoring, as we all know, the only national holiday for an African-American in United States history. So we were very pleased about that. And in conclusion, conclusion, Madam Chair, the foundation will be traveling this Saturday, which is April 13th, to the Lincoln Tomb, state historic site in Springfield, Illinois, for the dedication of a floral piece in memory of U.S. President Abraham Lincoln, who was assassinated on April 14th, 1865. And for the last six years, the foundation has hosted this remembrance ceremony in his memory at the actual interment site at the Lincoln Tomb. And we invite the general public, as well as this committee, and special guests, Mr. Nowacki, and our cameraman, Mr. Dale Harvey, to come on down and be a part of 19th century history, as I like to say. And there is no fee to enter the Lincoln Tomb. It is open to the public. And the Katie Hall Foundation will sponsor our church bus. And this is located at Van Buren, Missionary Baptist Church, 2585 Van Buren Street. Pull-off is at 7:30 AM because we want to take our time as we travel 55, Interstate 55 to Springfield. And the first 12 people to sign up can ride on the church van to Springfield. And we welcome people to come down and enjoy the city of Springfield and so much history as related to President Lincoln. His home is there. And for those of you who haven't been there, it is a treat because you can walk through the president's actual bedroom.
Of course.
They have it where you can do that. So it's a very interactive experience, and we welcome the first 12, that is, to join us. Thank you, Madam Chair, and that's our update.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Any questions for Ms. Hall? All right. Well, moving on, then, we go back to the Gary Historical and Cultural Society update from Ms. Patricia Brown.
Okay. Well, we're moving right along as far as the Gary Historical and Cultural Society. And what we're doing, we're starting a membership drive. We started it at the beginning of the year. It's $25 per person, and it's ongoing for the whole year. And it's supporting us in a way that we need support as far as what type of sites we're looking at, what type of work that we're doing, trying to do all the copying and whatnot of what people are contributing to the society, to the Gary Historical Society. Also, it's helping us to pay bills, which I wasn't aware of because Naomi was very good about doing everything herself. I don't know how she did it, or why she did it, but she did a lot of work herself. And me serving as Executive Director of that group, I made them very aware of, very well aware, that I am a married woman with children, and I have grandchildren and great-grandchildren. So I'm not, I'm gonna give it a lot of time, but I will not be doing all that Naomi did. So everybody has to get on board and help out with running the summer school program there at St. John's Lutheran Church, an excellent program for the children during the summer, not only enhancing their studies with the experts. Because we do have, the people that come and devote their time, they are experts in what they're doing, the musicians, the arts, the educators, the mathematicians. I said, oh my God, they really have a lot going for us here in Gary, Indiana, because people are willing to give back. And it's beautiful that they're able to share that with the students. At one point, I would love to see them connect with the seniors, because our seniors are just there. There's not really a laser in between our students and the seniors, and it should be, especially your nursing homes, because the seniors, they're not just, it's unbelievable if you're not connected with the nursing home. And once you are, you realize the reality that they're just sitting there, and they're probably getting a little bit of exercise in, but their minds are being, it's not what it should be. It should be utilized. They have so much information to give us, and we've gotta make a way to make that possible to let it, to let us come into their lives. We'll see how we're gonna do it, but we definitely want to accomplish that in our goals for this year. Also, dealing with the Gary Historical and Cultural Society, every nine days, we do get phone calls from Mr. McShane or Mr. Hess connecting us with different people in the public. There was a family that they called me about, and it was the family of Marty, Marty, I can't remember her name, here it is, right here, Marty Mackey. Marty Mackey was a former graduate of Tolleson High School back in 1952. Marty Mackey was, her family was bringing her back to Gary, Indiana. She's relocated to Annapolis, Indiana. They've been down there for a little while. The family continued their growing up in that area. And her daughters, there's, there was two daughters, one or two daughters, and a couple nieces. And they brought their mother back a couple weeks ago to see the Tolleson area. They had their itinerary all mapped out, and I joined them. And it was a pleasure being part of their family group. And we had a good time because the sites that they were looking at, we had a, wow, we chose some, we covered just about all of them. And we weren't able to cover the sites on-site. I covered them through the publications that was put out by the people who wrote about Gary, Indiana, or I covered them through the news, newspapers that had been published. And of course, they got a chance to go back to Tolleson High School.
Wow.
And she was happy because she saw the old lockers. We kind of just saw them from a distance because it was off limits to the general public. But she was just overwhelmed to find out that the Boys and Girls Club has taken that site on, and it is being utilized and used by the citizens of Gary, Indiana. So it was a wonderful gathering of the family, and they gave a nice donation to the Gary Historical and Cultural Society. And I do thank the family, but as far as being with them all day, we had a good time. And here they are. We started off at the J's Breakfast Club there on 36th and Broadway for our breakfast, and they commended me. They said, Patricia, you couldn't have picked a better site. I said, thank you. They were so pleased with the menu. The menu covered everything, anything and everything they wanted, they were able to supply us with. So we had a good time. I had to commend the family, and I enjoyed them, and they enjoyed me. There was also another thing dealing with St., not St. John's, yeah, St. John's Hospital. I have sat down with Judy Leek Mead several times because she's researching her family history, and I'm trying to help her out as much as I can. One of my family members is from Evanston, Illinois. Her name is Rosetta Grappert. Not that she was connected with Gary, Indiana, because Rosetta always lived in Evanston once she came north after living in Dublin, Mississippi. When she came north, she sent for her brothers and sisters to get them out of the cotton field, letting them come north to relocate, get in an area where they're able to get other jobs other than the cotton field. So in doing that, I ran across some of her obituaries, and I was surprised to run across an individual. I said, the Blake family. I said, I know that name, Reverend Blake. I might have not known him personally, but he was, he was raised in Gary, Indiana. I said, oh my gosh. And he is an alumni of Roosevelt High School. He crosses his, he crossed roads with the H.O. Tatum. And my God. And then when I looked through the obituary, which people of color, they do publish obituaries for their family. And looking at the obituary, I saw Emmett McCullough. I said, oh my gosh. What's his name? I said, oh my gosh, what's his name? It's gonna be surprised when he finds out that his father was at this funeral. And also, uh, Mamet Powell. I said, wow, this is a biggie for us, looking at this obituary. So I wanted to share it with their families. Uh, we're all connected and we're all over, not only this area. We're all in Illinois, we're all downstate. And these are people that are connected with Gary, Indiana. Now we're all over the, all over the states. So it's beautiful because our young people serving in the service, no matter where they're at, attorneys, whether they're in the medical field, rather such as my grandson, Wendell Wadsworth Levisster III. He is aerospace engineer, serving in Lockheed Martin. He's their system manager of the F-35 jet. So he's a token on our, on our chest, you know?
That's fabulous.
Isn't that wonderful? Little bitty boy from Gary, Indiana.
And there's also another engineer from Gary, Indiana with Lockheed Martin. And we all know his dad, Attorney Mac Arthur Drake and his mom, Attorney Linda Drake. Yes, Darryl Drake, uh, is working with Lockheed Martin in Florida. And he's also a proud graduate of Howard University, uh, School of Engineering, so, yeah.
Oh, that's great.
Excellent. Yeah, so I think that'll sum it up for Gary Historical.
Thank you, thank you very much. Um, has the, uh, is the society meeting on a regular basis or...
Yes, we are, yes. The second, let me pull out my calendar.
Can I see that feature?
Sure.
Yes, thank you.
The second Tuesday, this is the second, this is the, uh, second...
Monday.
Today.
Yes, this is the second Monday.
Yeah, they meet the third, um, Tuesday of the month at the Gary Public Library, the main library, at three o'clock in the afternoon. Gary Historical and Cultural Society.
Okay, at main library at three, okay.
Yes.
All right, very good. Thank you very much for that report.
Yeah, very interesting. I'm glad the ladies had the opportunity to, uh, come back from nineteen fifty-two. How did she feel about the neighborhood changing?
Where we took her, the sites that they were, they were in the Tolleson area. Tolleson was way in front of Gary, Indiana, you know, as far as their history and whatnot. So her family had been in this area for some time. Her being a grad- a graduate in nineteen fifty-two of Tolleson High School and being able to, their home that was built by one of their family members is still standing.
Wow.
So that was a great, you know, finding for them. And the neighbor next door, he was there and he kinda greeted them on the home and everything. And he had been there for years, over twenty, over twenty years. So they were happy and they were, and, well, she was a little upset with Pierre List's potato chips.
Oh, yeah.
Because it's not there anymore. But some of the places that she was not able to see, such as, uh, Villena Bakery that was on Seventeenth and Fillmore, a couple. But she did see Saint Michael's, uh, Greek Catholic Church, which she was a member of. And she saw, um, Horace Mann and her, one of the aunts had graduated from Horace Mann back in nineteen forty.
Oh, wow.
Yes, so I had a picture to present to the family of her being the graduate coming out of Horace Mann. And they were excited about that. They did get to see Beveridge Elementary School and Tolleson Darien, I mean Tolleson, um, library is still there, being, it's being occupied by the veterans now. So they were happy about that. The sites that they saw and they were just overwhelmed that it was still there.
Yeah.
And that's the importance of our Preservation Commission. Even though you might see decaying sites and whatnot and it looks like they need to tear that down. That's Gary's history.
It's us, yeah.
And that's why we're sitting here. That's why we're taking so much time. We want to preserve it as best we can. And we're on board to do that, to make it happen. Thank you.
Yeah, I think of it as, you know, Gary's history is one of its resources. It's one of its assets. And because it's such a rich history, we really need to preserve it and, and so that it's available for people to come back and see or for people, you know, the younger people to see for the first time. So I'm very pleased, that's great, that's great. All right, uh, we are down to the, um, we're, uh, down to other business, but, uh, before we go there, Desiree, would you like to, um, update us on what, um, uh, Live Arts is doing?
Well, we are, um, preparing for summer. And, uh, next week, we're gonna be hosting, uh, a printmaking, family printmaking day, uh, work- workshop. It's just a morning, it's just an hour and a half for parents, families to drop in and participate in just a quick workshop. But then on the, let's see, May eleventh, um, we're going to offer a family art-making, uh, workshop in which we'll be focusing on sculpture, three-dimensional works. And that too is just a short workshop of about an hour and a half. And we invite participants to come, um, and then aside from that, we are, I'm looking at, um, sponsoring these, um, monthly community, just walk-in, drop-in art-making events, one day a month, um, so that the community can have an opportunity to experience what we're all about and see what we're doing. And we are asking those of you who have children as young as two years old, they are welcome. Of course, we ask parents to stay with their child. But, um, that's what we're doing. And again, we are setting up for summer and we will be out at off-site locations for the most part. We'll be in churches, we'll be, um, we may even be in Chicago for a bit of the summer as well. We've been asked to host a variety of different art, uh, summer programs. So that's what we're doing.
Excellent, that's great. So you've been asked to host some summer programs, um, in Chicago or is that here?
Uh, both. We've been working with Clark Road Baptist Church for about, uh, seven, eight years now. And we've been doing their summer, uh, Bible, summer Bible, uh, camp for those many years. We just do the art portion.
Right.
And we're open and we're hoping that we can, um, do other, uh, agencies, nonprofits, faith-based organizations. We've worked with, uh, local, um, housing, um, company. The headquarters had asked us to come in one summer to facilitate a summer program for its children in their, uh, housing development. And, uh, we did, we offered Spanish and art, uh, that particular summer.
Oh, that's great. And, um, it sounds like it might be something that, um, maybe you could partner with the Summer Youth Program that they do. I think, how long is that program, the, that, uh, Gary Historical and Cultural Society?
Five weeks.
Oh, five weeks.
Oh, okay, yeah. Yeah, we may be able to do, we may be able to do something. I don't know if we can do the entire five weeks because we already have, uh, plans in place, but we may be able to take a look at how we can fit in.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Excellent.
We also have a big event happening in Chicago at the, uh, Chicago Cultural Center.
Oh, good.
That's on, uh, the twenty-fifth of May. It's on our website, all of these are on our website. And, um...
What's the website again?
And, uh, it's all, it's a house music, uh, event. It's going to be, I think, a week of house music. And this particular day is the day dedicated to involving children in this themed event. So we were happy to get the call to, uh, participate in that. Uh, we'll be making, uh, different instruments, um, through art. Uh, we'll, we're hoping to get more, um, old salvaged, um, music components so that children can build sculptures with those as well.
Oh, I have some in my garage. I guess export to a clarinet.
We'll have to talk, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's great, that's great. I, I have to ask, how does, um, Live Arts Studio get its funding? I mean, how...
Well, we, um, mainly have contracts and we offer lessons and that's pretty much it. We do not have a grant with any organization or any other entity. Um, and I guess that was mainly on purpose because we didn't want to be held to, um, to meet certain guidelines.
Restrictive what they wanted you to do.
Yes, this gave us the, the liberty to kind of, um, do what we can do best without, um, restraints. But, um, we, we are always open to working with a variety of groups. And again, most of those have been through contracts, um, no matter what. If it's through a state agency, whether it's through a church or, um, we just... We prefer to work in that capacity because that's how we've survived.
That sounds great, that sounds good. Okay, um, any other questions for the center or not?
Uh, no.
Thank you for being on board.
Oh, and I want to thank you for, um, the library, the, um, the, well, the library cultural, the cultural library center. Yes, I did receive a call from the director's office.
Mrs. Morrow.
Yes, Mrs. Morrow. And, um, they did reach out regarding the, um, sculpture that they needed to refurbish. So, uh, we spoke last, last week about that. And I shared with her my comments and suggestions. So I'll get back with them on Wednesday, once I get a few more, um, get more feedback from, uh, various companies too, for the cleaning of that bronze sculpture. Yes, it, it had been outside, I guess, since, since the sixties or so, since the nineteen sixties. And, uh, so they want to clean the, uh, bronze, the, the patina off the bronze.
That's what I, that's what I warned them about, the patina.
Yeah, so I shared with them, uh, there are many ways, sandblasted off, then you gotta finish it. But there's just a way, you know, maintaining sculptures. Each year, there are things that you must do, similar to how you keep your lawn up. You gotta, you gotta take care of it. You have a sculpture out there, but you also have to have, you have to be able to maintain it. And so, um, many of the, um, suggestions I offered were similar to the ones that the, you know, these big professional agencies shared as well. So, um, I'll give them more feedback next week on that.
And what was the date in May for the Chicago Cultural Center House Music?
May twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth.
And it's from two to four.
Two P.M. to four P.M.
Yeah, for children and families ages two, I think, to twelve or fifteen.
Very interesting, okay, good. All right, and do we have anything else for the good of the committee?
Uh, yes, Madam Chairwoman. I would like to, uh, mention to this committee, uh, hopefully we can keep the History is Alive program going in the summer. I believe that was the last Saturday in August?
Yes.
We did that. And the reception, we normally have the third Saturday in July from, uh, one to two P.M., I believe, or two P.M. to three P.M., one of those. So, uh, that's, uh, something I'm looking forward to from this committee. Uh, the History is Alive and the History is Alive, uh, oh no, it's the Historic Preservation Tour.
Right.
Reception, yes.
It starts off in July.
Yeah, in July.
So it's with the redevelopment department and they are already planning. So we're gonna get on board with them.
Right.
Great, great.
Come on in.
I would like to see that.
Tell me again, uh, the History is Alive is normally, what'd you say?
Last Saturday in August.
The fourth Saturday in August.
Yes, and the, um, reception that this committee and the Katie Hall Foundation and the Historic Preservation Commission sponsors is the third Saturday in July.
Third Saturday.
In July, just for one hour. And it's usually from two o'clock to three P.M. So, uh, the times are flexible. If this committee is interested, I can start to make contact with the mayor's office for the availability of the Gary Room.
Right, I think that would be a good idea for the July event. And I will make a point of, um, talking to the Park Department about the History is Alive.
Yes.
Um, because we need to get on that, on their calendar as well.
Yes.
Okay.
Is, for that event, is there use of a park site? Is it held in a park?
Gateway Park.
Gateway Park, right across the street, yeah. Yeah, and we need to decide a theme for that and, you know, how we're going to, what we're going to do there. We had a really, I thought, a really interesting time last year. Although we didn't have a good turnout, it was a fabulous program, so. So we've gotta, we have to make it both happen, the fabulous program and the good turnout, so.
Yes, yes.
Um, but we will, um, we'll start, uh, get a subcommittee and get started on that.
Very good.
But I will, um, make sure that I contact the Park Department.
And the final, uh, comment that I have, I would like to invite every member of this committee to Van Buren Missionary Baptist Church on Saturday, April twentieth. Uh, we will have our annual prayer breakfast, uh, for the, uh, Van Buren Missionary Baptist Church United Mail Course Boosters. And we do realize it is the Easter weekend and we will begin promptly at nine oh five A.M. and end, uh, by ten fifteen A.M., no later than ten twenty. And the breakfast is ten dollars and all of the money raised benefits Van Buren Missionary Baptist Church. The food is delicious and, uh, short program. And we want to get everyone out, uh, to do their Easter shopping and, uh, their Easter cooking. So we won't hold long. So I would like to invite the general public as well. And the, uh, United Mail Course, uh, will celebrate, uh, its sixty-ninth year at Van Buren on June second, which is the first Sunday, at four P.M. There's no cost. And, uh, this year, we have a special treat. The oldest member of the United Mail Course turns one hundred years, yeah. So we look forward to saluting him and he's still singing.
Oh, that's fabulous.
Yeah, he's still singing, so we're looking forward. So we invite this committee and if we remember the United Mail Course, a few of them were here, I believe it was last fall, uh, when they were here. So come on out and, uh, enjoy some great gospel singing on, uh, Sunday, June second. And if you can make it on, uh, April twentieth, come on out to the, uh, prayer breakfast, uh, the day before Easter Sunday. And these are the, uh, comments that I have, uh, for the committee, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, sounds like a good thing. All right, um, we have accomplished the business of the Art Culture and History Committee and so ask for a motion for adjournment.
Is there any comments, any opportunity for comments? It says comments.
Okay, yes, I would appreciate that. It says comments from the committee, but since you're here, we would love to have them.
Okay, well, I did want to just, uh, bounce an idea off the committee. Um, the city of Gary has, uh, has had twenty mayors. Eighteen of those mayors have been elected. Two of them had served, uh, unexpired terms until they were, uh, uh, until another person was appointed. So in other words, a, 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 a mayor... So in other words, uh, uh, Mayor, Mayor Allen served about thirty days. And a, uh, a lesser-known candidate, Mr. Hayes, had served briefly several months before the, uh, the, uh, before the, uh, third non-consecutive term of Mayor Johnson. So he served briefly in that period of time. And, uh, since much of the conversation today was both regarding history and historic locations, uh, the locations that, of the mayor's homes are all readily available. Uh, my brief research shows some of them are still occupied by the mayor, uh, by the, by the, by the person, uh, mostly are later mayors, uh, of course, uh, Mayor Freeman Wilson, Mayor King, Mayor Allen, uh, Rudy Clay's house is still there and several other, uh, the, the homes, uh, that would, are, are still there. Some, some of the homes are in poor condition, uh, some of the homes are vacant, some of the sites are vacant lots. But it seems that, although it's easy to research it, there is, there is no, um, compiled, directory of those. And I was wondering if the committee, if it would be an appropriate project for either the committee to do something with that or maybe the, uh, the Preservation Commission might be interested in doing something with that or maybe the Historical Society might be interested. So in other words, the information is not difficult, um, you know, documenting it with a, with either a photograph. But it seems that, uh, that this is a, this would show a, a continuum going from Mayor Knotts in nineteen ten all the way to, uh, Karen Freeman Wilson in, uh, for, for, for a period of over, over, uh, over, uh, over a hundred and ten years.
Yeah.
So does that sound like something? Because now, some of it is a little, uh, is, you know, some of it might be a little, uh, you know, some of these vacant lots and some of these vacant buildings, but once the mayor's homes, I think there's kind of a poignancy in that. And of course, we have, uh, you know, the homes of some of our, our living mayors and some of the homes are, are occupied by other people. Uh, I'm not even sure that they know that they were living in the home of, uh, of an ex-mayor. But there are several on the east side, they are on the west side, they are on the south side, they are downtown and they are in midtown. So the whole city is covered by these, uh, what, between these twenty sites. But I don't, you know, I'm not sure of what the, if that would be something that, uh, maybe we could take it up at a different meeting. But it's not a difficult project to do. And it is a, it is a project that might, you know, particularly we have these tours. Someone may be interested in incorporating that. It's easy to compile a list, it's easy to find the locations, it's all public record. But I've not found a, a compiled list of them. So, uh, so, but the information is available to be compiled and then how it's disseminated, I'm not sure. What, what value we have in terms of, um, general interest, I think it'd be interesting, but...
Right, yeah.
Because it actually tells a, it tells a, you know, if there's a compelling story going all the way back from Knotts all the way to, um, you know, Hatcher and, uh, more present mayors, so. And some of these sites are, their sites are available.
I like the fact that it covers, you know, a hundred years and it's, you know, eighteen to twenty sites. I think that's really interesting. I would suggest that, uh, um, at this meeting, uh, we have representatives from the, um, Historic Preservation Commission and also from the, uh, Gary Historical and Cultural Society. So I would suggest that if you all would take it back to your committees to see if it's something that they may be interested in pursuing and, uh, let us know. And then, uh, the art culture, this council committee of the Art, Culture and History Committee, the way I envision it is what was to be kind of a clearinghouse for, to make sure that we weren't missing anything, that we've had all the history, art, culture, that we're making sure that everything was connected so that we would have a good network of things. So for specific projects, um, I wasn't thinking about doing that, but, um, but it's not something that we can't do, so.
So, Ms. Brown, you're, you're, you're in the meeting here, is that, is that something that, some, is there some other meeting that I could attend where I make a presentation?
Usually when you, when they, uh, bring up the homes, it's coming from the families and the members of the families. Otherwise, um, it would be enormous because we also have pastors.
Well, I'm not suggesting that they're all historic sites. I'm just suggesting that we compile a list so...
Yes.
So when, so, and it's a, it's a, it's a project that would be, uh, only listing the addresses of the residents of the mayors as they served. It's not saying that they, some of them may be historic sites.
Yeah, some of them might be secretive also, you know? That's like I said, we usually wait on the families to bring that address to us and...
Well, it's public record where a mayor lived. That's public record.
Okay, and I know usually like where, where they're, for the ones that are deceased, even then, you know, we really don't, we, if the families bring it forward, we will do the homework, otherwise it's...
Well, this is not homework, this is public record. In other words, it's...
Somebody's gotta do it.
The information is readily available, but no one's compiled a list.
Yeah.
Uh, you sound like it might be discouraged by itself.
Do you have your list?
I'll just hold my own counsel. I'll hold my own counsel.
Uh, do you have the list, Mr. Noackey or Parkman's? Can we take a peek at it quickly?
I don't have it with me.
Oh, you don't have it with you? So, uh, I would like to...
You know what, I'll just hold my own counsel on it.
Wait, wait. I would like to see it compiled and we can make sure a copy is at the local library and, uh, other research because, um, you could always, if somebody's doing research on a former mayor, that may be neighbors.
It's all public record. It's not, it's not research, it's all just public record.
Alrighty, well, we want to work with you. We don't want to discourage you and...
I thought it'd be interesting, but...
Yeah. Yes, well, uh, you know, sometimes people come many years later and do research and they might can say, "Well, where does so-and-so live?" So, uh, we're going to, I would like to work with it. Yes, I would like to, and I'm sure Ms. Pat would.
Don't you really want to have my opinion?
Yeah.
I'll just, I'll just, I'll hold my own counsel.
Okay.
It doesn't sound like it was as good an idea as I thought.
Well, no, no, we don't want to discourage you because...
No, I'm not discouraged.
You want to...
I'll just, I'll just hold my own counsel on it because I, 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 I just, I just feel like it's, like it's, uh, like maybe I just, you know, it's not as interesting as I think it is. Yeah, and sometimes I think something's interesting.
I understand, I'm the same way.
And then other people don't think it's interesting.
I'm the same way, Mr....
And I, and I, I think that's a, I think that's a, that's wonderful. We live in a country where everyone can either be interested in something or not interested in something as...
Right, but we don't, uh, this committee doesn't want to discourage you since it does say "history" on here. So we'll, we'll work with it. Don't give up hope.
All right. Well, thank you. Uh, thank you all and thank you all for attending and thank you all for viewing and we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Good evening, good evening.